Okay. Okay, Commissioners. Thank you for your patience. We still have a long way to go, so we're gonna jump right back into the agenda and the agenda item E1. We're gonna have Stuart. He's looking at the language, so that's why.
Yeah. Okay. Aloha, Commissioners, Chair. Okay. We have a recommended motion for budget approval for additional funding not to exceed $200,000 for Honakaia non-portable water system improvements. And let me read through the amended recommended motion. Amended recommended motion. Okay, sorry. You know what, my dang, I hate when this happens, okay.
Me too.
Mahalo kalamai. Land Development Division requests the Hawaiian Homes Commission's approval to increase the funding ceiling for the design and construction of the Honakaia non-portable water system project not to exceed an additional amount of $200,000 from $1,655,000 up to $1,865,000. And approval for the department to issue a notice to proceed to the awarded contractor to initiate construction of the water system.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve, a motion to consider staff recommendation?
So moved.
David seconded. Everybody, everybody. They all seconded. Okay, is there any further discussion? I know that we had good discussion in the executive session. Any other further questions for Stuart? Okay. Is there anybody opposed to approving this agenda item? Seeing none, the motion carries. Stuart, you there?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're gonna go to F2. Agenda item F2. F2, so.
Aloha Commissioners, Kahana, I'll be near again, acting land management administrator. I know there were some questions Commissioner Kapu specifically. Were able to find that information regards to the issuance or the approval. Back in July 2018, the Commission did approve the issuance of final approval to pursue condominium property regime. And it provides that KCDC to move ahead with completing their condominium property regime. They are in the process, we have the paperwork as we speak. I mean, we have the paperwork for our review, our AGs are reviewing it. We haven't, Chair hasn't signed it yet, but we are looking to, Chair is looking to sign it soon. Does that answer your question?
We can provide you the copy that he referred to.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. I'll be sure to have them indicate that in the, in the condition also, the date that he, that Chair signs it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other? You read the, yeah. Did we have an earlier motion to consider, right? Okay. And last chance for any questions, concerns before I, okay. Does anyone oppose?
Mr. Chair, wait, I have a question, is this, which one is this?
The F2, the.
KCDC.
KCDC. East Kapolei.
Oh, okay, so it was in a deferral, it came back on the floor.
We deferred until we were able to find the information for Commissioner Kapu.
What about the information that I brought up?
What was?
I think the attorney had mentioned that he would follow up and confirming, I think, the.
He was gonna get back.
The registration, yeah, that you had the DCCA registration.
Yeah. Is that something you check out, Kahana? I'm sorry, is that something that you normally check out when you go through these companies and agreements?
Not typically, but I do look at them, you know, occasionally.
Oh.
I didn't have a chance to look at the one you bought up though. But I did look at it, I did pull it up online and did see what you had mentioned.
Okay.
So they're aware of it and Scott is aware of it.
So they're gonna work on it and bring it not to good standing, so that company who's gonna be involved with this?
Correct, as I understand it, that's what Scott had mentioned.
Would, would you like to, would you like to amend the?
I want to amend the recommendation.
To include that they have to be in good compliance at the time that we, okay, so.
Yes, I thank you for that, if I could have a friendly amendment to add that. Whoever moved that motion, we could add that.
Okay, who made the motion? Okay, Dennis, are you okay with amending the motion to include the requirement for the DCCA documents to be brought into good standing?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, that's to clarify item number six, which reflects Ho'omaka Marketplace, and that's the, the party that you had referred to, right?
Yes, yes, sir, yes. Thank you, Dennis.
So do I have a second for the amendment?
Pauline.
Second.
Okay, Dennis jumped in and seconded, so let's vote on, thank you, let's vote on the amendment. Is anyone opposed to the amendment? Okay, seeing none, the amendment passes. And then, is there anyone opposed to the amended motion? Seeing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Kahana. F3, yeah.
Thank you Commissioners, item number F3. LMD seeking that the Hawaiian Homes Commission approve the following actions while developing a process to make short-term agriculture and pastoral lands available to beneficiaries. This is again, an approval of annual renewal right-of-entry permits on Kauai Island.
Okay, any further discussion? Just for the record, I made some commitments to Commissioner Neves, and I will follow through up on those commitments.
And just to echo that, we will follow up Commissioner and acknowledge that we will follow through with Chair Ayla.
Yes, and I'll send you the, the specific ROEs on Kalanaka.
Kalanaka Amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did, did we discuss the delinquencies?
We did not.
No.
There are two, there are two ROEs that have delinquencies. My request was that we would, we're in the process of trying to work with them, we would renew it. And if we're unable to resolve the delinquencies, then within the 30-day period, we would cancel them.
Can you amend, put that in amendment motion? Dennis?
We don't have a motion for this, okay, so F3, thank you. So F3, we haven't, we don't have a motion on the table to approve, to discuss staff's recommendation. So can I have a motion first? Can I get a motion to rec, to?
I contain the motion, I move with amendment.
Can we get the original motion approved first?
Okay.
Who did the second, did you get it? Can whoever seconded?
I seconded.
Pauline. Okay. Now we can entertain a possible motion for amendment. Patty, what did you have in mind?
I just wanna add in what you had mentioned on, one, what Commissioner Neves has concerns on, on the follow-up, on what the ROEs. I'd like to add it in the amended motion of what the staff will follow up in.
On the status of the follow-up?
Exactly. The delinquency, one, and the other one was, the other one was what? Dennis, where are you?
You're on mute, Dennis.
Dennis, help me out here.
You're mute.
So one was on the delinquency that we should add into this amended motion, and then two was the other that, what did you say?
Yeah, there's the other, there's three pastoral ROEs that need to be added as well that the Chair is gonna investigate.
Okay, so we wanna add that into this motion, so it's more caveat that it will be covered.
Very good.
Okay, you have some, you have some language in mind? And then we need a second. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay, Neves, you gonna help?
Yep, I'm looking, hold on.
That the Commission approved the annual renewal of the right-of-way entry permits, Kauai Island, and to add, one, to follow up on the two delinquents, is that it?
Yeah, follow, those, follow up on the two delinquent ROEs.
ROEs.
And also three, three pastoral ROEs, which I'll provide the information to the Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I think to make it more clear, non-compliance issues with those three.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so to.
Call for the question?
Yeah, so does anyone have any, does anyone wish to vote no on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, the amendment passes. The full motion, does anybody wish to vote no?
Yes.
Yes, you want to vote no?
Yeah, I, I have a problem with 562 with Joseph Gordon, 21-acre pastoral, who is delinquent. And I, I'm not sure why we wanna work with him, and maybe the department can clarify why we wanna work with him, because I'm guessing that there would be beneficiaries that would be willing to step into his journey for this ROE, and he's not a beneficiary.
Okay, and we're gonna, is this the only one that you have on issue with, Commissioner?
Yes.
So before we vote on the original motion, the original amended motion, we would need another amendment to remove this ROE.
Five, five what?
562.
Second page of the list.
Yeah.
Pastoral.
So, okay, so Dave, David, I trust that you'll make the amended motion to?
I would ask to amend the motion to just remove these number, or ROE 562, who is Joseph Gordon, and he's delinquent 14 months, plus $255.81 in prior balance.
Second. Second.
Was moved in, seconded, those in favor? Does anybody oppose the second amendment?
No.
Okay, seeing none, the second amendment passes. Going back to the amended motion, are there any opposition to the amended motion? Okay, seeing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Next up is G1. G? G1, yeah, we're gonna go back to the excess property in Eva Beach.
Okay. Aloha Commissioners, Andrew Choi, acting planning program manager. The recommended, recommended motion action is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission delegate authority to the Chairman to respond to the General Services Administration notice of availability for the above referenced property to select approximately 80 acres of that property for appraisal according to section 203F of the Hawaiian Homeland's Recovery Act of 1995, and to negotiate the terms and conditions of DHHL's acceptance of such property under the Hawaiian Homeland's Recovery Act.
Okay, can I get a motion to consider staff recommendation?
So moved. Second.
With, with me today, I have Perlene Fukuba from our planning office, who has been the lead staff in planning office with this topic. She'll be giving a quick presentation.
Aloha Chair, aloha Commissioners. This one is a joint submitted between the Land Development Division, Land Management, and the Planning Office. Last month, we came before you to talk about the GS offered surplus lands, and it was presented as an information item. We covered. My apologies, I talked a little bit louder. Slide 2, please.
Closer, please.
Last month, as an information item, we covered five things. The notice of availability, the provision that allows us to accept this land, which is the Hawaiian Homeland's Recovery Act. We went to description of the surplus property. We also shared the matrix where the staff has been undertaking the due diligence actions. And then we also went through the next steps. Next slide. The property we're in this that we are discussing is 80 acres in Eva Beach, which is approximately five miles from the DHHL offices. Eva Beach is a sprawling neighborhood that has undergone a lot of development in the last three or so decades. In the neighborhood, you will find a lot of community amenities, such as groceries, drugstores, and hardware stores, as well as churches, restaurants, and gas stations. At last count, there were 22 public and private schools that provide education for our Keke from preschool through high school. Additionally, in nearby East Kapolei, we have the UH Resto Wahoo and the Tokai University campuses. The Eva Beach neighborhood is serviced by the bus, and there are three planned rail stops as well. At the top of Fort Weaver Road, you will find the Queens West Hospital. And outdoor recreation includes bike paths, beaches, golf courses, and parks. Approximately 20% of the parcel is cleared with five homes, an office, a storage building, and a parking area. The remaining 80% is heavily vegetated. And then on perimeter of the parcel is a dirt road that allows security and fire access. Next slide. As mentioned, the team has gone through extensive due diligence actions, and there are four areas, potential issue areas that we considered. First is the property title and boundary issues. Second is environmental hazard conditions. Third is development potential and constraints. And fourth is interim costs to maintain and manage the property prior to development. This brings us to our due diligence matrix. And number one is the first area that you see in yellow, which is the property title and boundaries. The action needed for the title was to obtain the title report and surveyor's report, which was provided by the GSA. And it confirms that the property is indeed federal land in the land court property. Number three, where it says DHHL action, we've had a subsequent conversation with the GSA, and this information, the latest information they have provided is that they will provide, convey the property, excuse me, through a quick claim deed to the DHHL, and will undertake, and DHHL will need to undertake the process to subdivide the 175-acre into the 80-acre DHHL and the 95-acre USGS retained parcel. The second consideration we looked at, which is highlighted in blue, are the environmental considerations. And we have received the reports from our consultants. These are listed in your packet as exhibit B and C. The first two were done by Enviro Services. And the first one is the Phase 1 site assessment. The Phase 1 site assessment did not show significant recognizable environmental conditions, and it's not likely that the site contains hazardous materials. So that was exhibit B. Exhibit C is a limited hazard material survey. In this survey, the consultant checks for arsenic, asbestos, and lead-based paint. The findings from the consulting is as far as asbestos, one out of 534 suspected samples contained over the regulatory limit of asbestos, and it's basically under one of the kitchen tiles in the mastic. The lead-based paint is evident in all of the dwellings and buildings. In this case, the consultant went on the BGS 2015 survey that was actually commissioned by the GSA. It was sufficient because they did not see any more painted surfaces that were not already mentioned in that study. And then the third thing they looked at is arsenic, and there is arsenic because the ceiling panels are made of kaenick. Enviro Services recommendation is that the DHHL would need to manage and remove those, whether it be through remediation, encapsulation, or removal. The third report we received is from DUDIC. DUDIC conducted a magnetometer survey using aerial drones, and after they identified 61 areas as suspect, they did a visual inspection. Let's see, this is under exhibit D. The magnetometer survey did not show any, oops, anything that would be of concern to the agency. The team also looked at different maps, and I believe we already talked about the sea level rise, but the sea level rise could impact the Makai portion of the parcel. We would save approximately half of the parcel. We have talked to some experts, and they recommend that the sea level rise be considered. It's not conclusive, but we would wanna consider that as we review the pros and cons of accepting the property. The estimated, sorry, estimated sea level rise is 3.2 feet in the next 60 to 80 years. Continuing with environmental consideration, so this is still the area in blue. We also looked at the tsunami inundation map. And again, the Makai portion, about half of the property is in the tsunami evacuation zone. The top portion, the Ma'aka portion, is in the extreme tsunami evacuation zone. And this map is as, in your packet, as exhibit E. There are no wetlands, which you can see as exhibit F. And exhibit G is the flood hazards map. The Ma'aka portion of the property is in the firm D area of undetermined flood hazard, and the Makai portion of the property is in the firm XS, 0.2% annual chance of flood hazards. The third thing we looked at is development potential constraints for the property. Bowers and Kubota provided their, their analysis, and this is in your packet as exhibit H. Exhibit H shows that they confirmed that infrastructure capacity is available for development, and they also noted that off-site infrastructure costs would be lower than other DHHL properties. So those are the four areas that we looked for and did an analysis on the due diligence actions.
So, given the due diligence actions that we undertook, the department effectively came up with three options. And under the Hawaiian Homeland's Recovery Act, we, there are three options. One, we could take the entire property for appraisal. We could select a portion of the 80-acre parcel for appraisal, or we could reject the offer. Commissioners, so based on the due diligence, we rejected what the third option was, which was to reject the entire property. We felt that this, this property presents a really good opportunity to address the applicants on the Wahoo waiting list and provide additional homesteading. The other two options before you, it really, really depends on your level of risk tolerance. The first option would be to take the entire property. It's a higher risk but higher reward scenario. As Perlene had mentioned, about half of the property is in the sea level rise exposure area. What we do know is that it is in the area. What we do not know at this time, based on the latest science and the latest reports, is what the frequency of flood events or high wave action would be, and what the intensity and severity of those events would be 80 years from now. It could be significant, it could be minimal, but right now, we do not know. So it is a higher risk, higher reward. The other consideration was that if we did take the entire property, the current cost to maintain the property that the federal government spends annually is about $200,000. So we would be taking on that, that, we could be potentially taking on that cost annually until the department is able to develop the property. The lower risk, lower reward scenario would be a recommendation to take a portion of the property that would be outside of the sea level rise area. This is about 38 acres of the property. So the trade-off is we would be at lower risk for potential hazards in the future. We would also save maintenance costs because the, the 80-acre portion that is Ma'aka is bordered by the golf course on the Diamond Head side, the USGS property on the Eva side, and the only access would be from North Road on the Ma'aka side. So the ability, I mean, the obligation to maintain the property would be a lot lower. That portion would also be, is currently highly, highly vegetated, so the landscaping costs and cost to maintain that would be less. But the big trade-off is, as I mentioned, it would be approximately 38 acres, so we would be getting about half of the potential number of homestead lots if we took this acre, I mean, if we took a portion of the property. So we could only serve about 50% of the weightless beneficiaries with taking only a portion of the property. So based on this analysis, our recommendation as staff would be to go with the first option, which would be to take the entire 80-acre property. It would provide more opportunities for those on the waitlist. The potential to be affected by future flooding events right now is not known. We have talked to some experts, and they, they said, depending on the severity, we could design options to mitigate those potential effects. One, one, one example would be to raise the, raise the property on the Makai side by putting additional fill. So the next steps would be, should the Commission accept, or accept, accept the staff's recommendation, would be to notify the GSA of the department's intent to accept the entire property. GSA would perform a appraisal. The department would review its, their appraisal, and we may accept or reject the property at that time. And then if the department accepts the surplus property, convenience documents between the two entities would need to be completed and executed. And I just went over this slide.
Questions, Commission members?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, David.
Andrew, what would be the cost of raising or adding more fill to protect the property from sea level rise?
That, that, that is one of the unknown factors, because we do not know what the intensity or frequency. because we do not know what the intensity or frequency of future flood events due to sea level rise would be eighty years from now. It's one of the risks that the department would be taking on. So as I said earlier, it really depends on your risk tolerance. If you're more of a risk taker, there is more reward to be had by taking the entire property. We can offer about twice as many homesteads if we take the entire property. If we only take the portion of the property that is outside of the sea level rise area, we can only provide about half as many homesteads.
No, I understand that, but you, you mentioned that one way to mitigate would be to add fill on the Makai side. So if, if we accept it, is that something that we would plan for? In other words, you would have a setback though in the event that fifty, sixty years from now, there was sea level rise of three and a half feet. You would be able to put a berm in there that would protect the home? That's my question.
I guess, in general, we, we could provide that mitigation, but I, I believe your question was how much that would cost.
Right, right.
And right now, we, we do not know because we do not know what the intensity of the future storm events would be at this time. So depending on the severity of the event, it could be more.
Yeah, so what you're saying is you don't, if you, if you plan for the worst at three point two, there's no way to calculate how high a berm you would have to construct and like that?
We could, we could make a best guess estimate of how high it would be, but it would be best guess, it wouldn't be a certainty.
So the only thing that I'm, that I'm thinking of is like on Molokai. If you go down through some of those lots that are around the ocean, and they, they were what, not even about a hundred years ago? And sea level rise is impacting them, where there used to be sand. Now the water comes right up to the boundary, and we know from dentists and engineers that that's going to impact those houses. So I don't mind accepting the property and giving it the appraisal. I just think that, you know, if we're going to plan for this, we need to plan for mitigation of sea level rise effects by maybe doing setbacks so that the houses aren't right on the road so that you don't have that impact in that area.
I, I think definitely if the department were to take the entire property, the first thing on our mind would be how to mitigate the impacts from sea level rise. The other thing that, and I'm just, we haven't gone through a planning process of the site yet, but another potential mitigation would be to cite some of the non-homestead uses such as, you know, a park or community services in the sea level rise area and not put a ninety-nine-year homestead lease in portions of the area.
Okay, thank you.
Question, question?
Yes, go ahead, Patty. You're on mute.
Thank you, Andrew, for this presentation. I, I would just like quickly to entertain a motion to delegate the authority of the chair actually to respond to the notice of availability. I would like to support that eighty-year plan of the acreage and giving the authority for our chairman to at least respond to the surplus land and, and to the eighty acres of the military. And then from there, I think we can still continue to update from the department after that goes through about land use, seawater level, and things like that. So I will be supporting that motion to delegate our chairman to move forward to, at least to respond to the notice. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Randy.
So I'm, I'm not opposed to accepting the eighty acres, but what's resonating from the, I think it was said, anticipated three point two level sea rise for this area. And I can't help but think about information that was provided to us a while ago. As a result of a study, I believe, that was done, maybe spearheaded by University of Hawaii on sea level rise. And, and Andrew, you may know, and maybe I'm getting it not quite right, but I do recall looking at maps. And if I recall correctly, I don't know if it was that sixty to eighty-year timeframe. For example, Kauna Kaka would be underwater past the highway. And then I believe Waimeanalo, Nanahuli, and other coastline Hawaiian homes areas would be affected by sea level rise. So, so, so I think the question about what is the mitigation is a really important one in accepting the eighty acres because it's, it's, it's going to be subjected to sea level rise. A portion of that, that property is in the inundation zone. So as the ocean rises, the inundation zone increases and goes further inland to cover this eighty acres. So I, I, I do want to ask if there's any way to get an estimate of what that means in terms of how far in will the water go?
So Commissioner, the three point two sea level rise, the map that was shown previously, that is the projection of future inundation. That is not the current situation. The current situation, the property is entirely out of the hazard area for sea, sea wave action hazards. But with projected sea level rise of up to three point two feet, the half of the property would be subject to events related to sea level rise, like increased flooding, increased highwave action-related events. So am I making myself clear? So the projection in twenty-one hundred is that about half of the property might be subject to the effects of sea level rise. The current state of the property is not subject to sea level rise.
Right, so, so no, I, I understand that, but in planning for the future, because these are long-term leases, so I, I am focused on the long-term impact to the property.
Okay, I think we share, we share some of that concern. Commissioner Awol, that is why this presentation is being made to you. And I see Nancy with her hands up, I think she wants to make a comment on sea level rise. Go ahead, Nancy.
Aloha, commissioners. The situation in Molokai is that those were coastal wetlands. And in some cases, for Kapaaake, it was open ocean that was filled in order to create the subdivision. This is a little bit different situation because it's karst and there is a lot of distance between the ocean and the property. So the way I'm looking at it, you, you know, the city may decide to elevate Fort Weaver Road. There's potential to put in walls. There may be a number of mitigations that will be done to protect those residential areas, Makai of this property. So it would take coordination with the city and county. But I, I think it's, right now, on paper, it looks worse than it potentially is. But karst is a problem also because the ocean can, and the, and the water table can move inland and can, you can get groundwater issues as well. So, you know, no matter what, it'll be a tough situation, but it's not exactly the same as South Shore, Molokai. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Just one additional note, when I hear sea walls, I get a little bit poo-eva because that contributes to erosion on either side of the seawall, so. But that's just mana'o.
Okay, thank you, Randy. I think we share your concern also.
Chair?
Yes, Pauline? Was that Pauline? No?
Chair?
Okay, Zach?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, just trying this out. If we do accept these, would we be able to do a land swap with the city and county or under state agency? We get a better area for, it's comparable with this land? For a better sense of, a better location?
So the question is, becomes part of inventory, are we able to swap it out later?
Yeah, this property, we could dispose of the property to another entity in the future if we so choose to do so, under the current guidelines.
Okay. Okay, Patty, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Andrew, I went to see the property in Eva. Really beautiful property. Is, is, who owns the golf course, the front? Is that the city's golf course?
I believe it's a municipal golf course, but I.
So will that remain open?
Yes, the golf course would remain open. And actually, you know, there could be a potential for homesteaders to have a view of a golf course in their backyard.
Yeah, it's, it's right on Fort Weaver. And then you have that two, I think, two or three multiple homes on there already. It's been there forever. I, I understand there's still inventory in that houses too.
Yes, yes, so there are five existing homes on the property. Most likely, if we were to redevelop the entire property, we'd probably have to demolish them in the long term, but there is potential in the short term to utilize those facilities as well.
Okay, so another thing you brought up about in the presentation is some of the facilities, because it's old there, they have asbestos?
We would have, can you clarify that?
Right, so.
Did I hear that correct?
You're correct, Commissioner. Four of the homes were built in the nineteen sixties, and during that time, they used canic for the ceiling tiles. So those would have to either be remediated or removed. We would probably need to hire an expert to make the formal recommendations to us because there it's also possible that you can reach a place if they're not damaged or waterlogged. The paint used is also lead-based paint, so that would also have to be addressed. The first issue of the asbestos, there's just one kitchen that has mastik used under the tiles.
So in, in, in summary, there are some remediation efforts that we would have to make to the existing property in order to make them safe and suitable for use.
Correct. And so when you do the cleanup of that, should we go forward on the asbestos? Who normally does your asbestos cleanup? And where would that be disposed?
The department would probably have to hire a third-party contractor to do the cleanup, someone that is experienced and has the capacity to do that type of cleanup. I am, I would have to follow up on where the hazardous materials would have to be disposed of.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Patty, I'm going to just ask for some clarification because there is an existing motion on the table.
Yes, sir.
And I heard that there was a desire to amend that. Is that true? Did I hear it correctly or incorrectly? But you're muted again.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I read the motion, according to the agenda, to delegate the authority of the chairman to respond to the notice of availability, exactly on towards the agenda. I didn't add any friendly.
Okay, but the second portion of that motion is to negotiate the terms and conditions of DHHL's acceptance of such property?
Yeah.
Did you have any concern with that? No?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. See, no further questions? Does anyone oppose?
I don't think I had a second though to that motion, no?
No, the motion?
Okay, there you go, Nevis.
Okay, does anyone oppose the passage of this agenda item? See none, motion carries? Thank you very much, Andrew, you guys. Pauline? Okay? Do we see fire? Lehu? See fire?
Aloha, commissioners, Lehuakini Lao Kano, Legislative Analyst. This is the draft legislative package for your consideration. We will approve any package at the next commission meeting. We received twenty-six proposals for legislation. I tried to highlight it as best I could in this matrix on the first three pages. And then we do have twelve either bills, non-justifications, or bills, or justifications of different proposals for your consideration. So of course, the independent legal council bill that we've introduced in the past, adding the chair or the chairs designated on the Water Commission, adding the chair or the chairs designated to the Board of Agriculture, adding the chair, again, or the chairs designated to the Board of Directors of the Agribusiness Development Corporation. There's some, basically to exempt the department, any, any housing development for Department of Homeland, Department of Hawaiian Homelands from school impact requirements, to exempt any development for the department from general excise taxes. There's also a measure relating to cesspools to allow a low-interest loan program to offer financial assistance for less seas on Hawaiian homelands with cesspools to be upgraded or converted. There's also legislation about the county boards of water supply and requiring that, or clarifying the requirements to reserve water credits for the use of the department. There's also about a bill on water rates to set the upset price for water that is leased. There's a proposal to have the counties maintain infrastructure on Hawaiian homelands that were built to county standards. And then there's two proposals, then there's a medical marijuana and industrial hemp proposal. So those are all the proposals for you to consider in draft form.
Lehuak? This is Pauline. Lehuak, the proposal for representation on the Commission on Water Resource Management. Is there any opposition to that in particular proposal?
The Department of Land and Natural Resources has not been supportive of it, just like the Attorney Generals for Legal Counsel. So we haven't been able to get it moved through the legislature. But again, we continue to state that the Department of Health is on the Water Commission. So similarly, the Department of Hawaiian Homeland should be given that consideration as well.
What is usually their opposition?
The concern is that maybe there might be issues of conflict of interest. But again, I think we feel that those matters can be handled without, and, and allow this proposal to go through. But that has been the main concern.
I guess I was confused because I thought that we already used to have opposition on the Water Resource, on, on, on the Commission on Water Resource Management. Did we ever have opposition on the Commission on Water Resource Management?
The department doesn't have a position, but there is requirements. And a lot of that came through the Office of Hawaiian Affairs advocacy to require that one of the members have experience or background in traditional and customary rights and, and that arena. And so that, that, maybe that's what you're. And so that, that, maybe that's what you're thinking of, but that's not a position specifically for the department.
So does the Office of Hawaiian Affairs usually support this particular proposal?
I can double-check if they took a position when, when it's been heard in the past. Again, the only opposition that I can recall was the Department of Land and Natural Resources.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so thank you, this was our information. Next up is Agenda Item C seven. Welcome, Jovi, back to the table.
I think Hokule is gonna be joining us remotely. Good afternoon, commissioners. Item C seven, staff is just presenting on behalf of the investigative committee. And so we just, I'll just go through the submittal in a summary fashion and then allow any member of the investigative committee to certainly chime in. So in March of 2019, the commission established an investigative committee to look at the native Hawaiian qualification process. There were a total of, I believe, five meetings that were held. And I think the, serving as staff to the committee, certainly a lot of deliberation and fact-finding going on by the committee. We met with all of the staff that touched native Hawaiian qualification in some way. I see Hokule's on, so I'm going to turn it over to her because she actually drafted this submittal, so I want to give her a chance to kind of go through the, the recommendation, the conclusions and the recommendations that we captured on behalf of the committee. Hokule?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Hokule Lindsay, the administrative roles officer for the department.
Hokule, can you speak a little bit closer to the mic? Louder.
Okay, is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, so for the submittal C seven, just in, in summary of, I think, maybe the major points in the submittal. Starting with the authority for really what we're talking about, the native Hawaiian qualifications. So the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act in section 201 defines native Hawaiian as 50% or more. Section 207 authorizes leases to be issued or awarded to native Hawaiians. And then section 208 says that the original lessee must be native Hawaiian, so that person must be a 50% blood quantum. The other important rule in this discussion is the administrative rules, section 10-2-16. And that rule delegates to the chair administrative functions. But it retains or reserves to the commission any sort of functions that would require judgment or discretion. And so when we talk about the native Hawaiian qualification process, it's really the way that the department verifies through documentation, native Hawaiian blood quantum in order to qualify as a beneficiary of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. Now, this is gonna take place basically in three functions. In the application process, in the transfer process, or in the successorship process. And the committee identifies sort of three categories. And what they're recommending is that the Hawaiian Homes Commission use that administrative rule 10-2-16 to recall the authority to accept and approve those who would qualify as 50% under the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. So the way that the committee proposes that be done, just in summary, would be three categories. And this all starts on page three of your submittal. So the first category would be those who are qualified. And so the department would use basically the kumu ohana process that they have, which uses birth certificates and primarily and other vital records to document and verify that a person is documented as 50% Hawaiian. The second category would be a little more complicated, where the documentation is either uncertain or exhausted. So the person is technically unqualified as far as the department may be concerned, or the, there's question about the qualification. And this comes up simply because documentation can go missing, it can be destroyed. Vital information is self-reported, and at different points in time, a person may report differently for whatever reason they have. And vital records sometimes over time collect different types of information. So there can be questions that come up through the documentation process. Now, sometimes in these situations, there can be a likelihood or a probability can be rationally drawn to try to determine a blood quantum. And so these kind of grayer area cases would be like category number two. It's not everybody who can't find documentation, it's the ones with a greater likelihood of showing 50%. And then the third category is a, is a little more complex than category two. Because, as you can imagine, family trees are interconnected and intertwined. And so sometimes a person has documentation that does show that they are 50%. They are awarded a lease. And then later down the line, someone else, a new applicant comes in with documentation that shows that, that, that a certain lessee may not be 50% or may not have the documentation to show their 50%. And so this third category would be unqualified because of later documentation. So each of these three categories would come before the commission is the proposal. The first category, those who are qualified consent agenda, which the commission would review and consent to the department's recommendation. The second category would come as a submittal to the commission with detailed information and a recommendation from the department as to what action should be taken. And the third category would come before the commission as a contested case brought by the department.
Contested case.
Okay, so
Lost the toilet.
I'm sorry. So I did want to just turn the commission to, I guess, under the recommendations section. Hokule has gone, has gone through the process by which the implementation of this new policy would occur. However, most importantly, the commission would actually need to take an action on this, and so I believe it's the committee's recommendation that those be put forward in the form of a submittal for the commission's full consideration. And then I did also want to highlight that this was actually kind of phase one of a two-phase process, with phase two being the committee making additional recommendations on the criteria that would be applied as to, to try to delineate those cases that may not have complete documentation but are closely, you know, that there can be a reasonable case made that this person is in fact a native Hawaiian. So we believe that the department is gonna need some guidance there, at least in terms of initial criteria to assist with the implementation, but the committee's sentiment was they wanted to do move forward with some of these policy recommendations in the interest of time, because some of this will be clarified as contested cases are heard and there's essentially kind of quote-unquote "a case law" that's established by the commission in the consideration of these cases. And I think that that's Hokule, is there anything that else that you can think of that? Or we can turn it over to the members of the committee if they wanna?
Commissioner? Commissioners? Any comments? Members of the committee, did we kind of get it right?
This is David. Yeah, I think, I think Hokule and Jovi did a great job in shepherding this process. And I think, I think they covered all of the highlights, but if anyone has questions, I think we're happy to.
Yes, I've got a question on the, on the methodology, the three methodology. On, number one is pretty explainable, but number two, unqualified based on uncertain and or exhausted documentation. Give me, give me, give me some, an example, some specifics, what documentation are we talking about? What type of document?
So it's our understanding that particularly some of our older kupuna ancestors, they may have documentation that says part Hawaiian or Chinese Hawaiian or something like that. So it's clear that they may have some percentage of native Hawaiian. But it's not really clear what percentage should be allocated to that ancestor, it could be 1%, it could be 99%. And so because the staff is uncomfortable rendering a decision as to what percentage should be allocated, what happens is no percentage is allocated to that ancestor. So that kind of a situation, what we're saying is that there would be the opportunity for the staff to bring forward the documentation they do have and a reasonable analysis to conclude that this ancestor may be at least 30% native Hawaiian, or 50% native Hawaiian, or 10% native Hawaiian, such that the applicant or the transferee in question, you know, is in fact a beneficiary. Because there is that discretion that has to be exercised by the commission or by the body, it would shift that uncertainty, I guess, onto this body as compared to being handled at the staff level. So that would be an example of the kind of case that would be brought forward.
And would, would number two be subject to a contested case?
No.
Contestable case, not number two?
Because in those circumstances, the individual has not been deemed a beneficiary. So the, the, so there would be an applicant, for example, or an individual who was seeking to receive a transfer of a lease. Number, the, the difference between number two and number three is in the case of number three, that individual would likely be a lessee whose lease may be brought into question and therefore would be you know, eligible for a contested case.
I see, because they were, they're, they're already considered a beneficiary at that point. And then they contest the case, then we may, may have to remove them.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Randy.
So, yeah, so I just wanted to add a few things to give it some historical context. I think this goes back to, I don't know, maybe it's been a couple of years now when we had Prince Archikens coming in before contesting the department's decision not to qualify him. And I recall Commissioner Kaupu at a certain point saying, are we trying to keep people on the list, or are we trying to get them off the list? And you know, that was a, to me, that was an extremely important statement to be making, which I believe eventually led to establishment of this committee. And, and, and basically, part of the intention of this committee is to make decision-making by the staff less arbitrary. And so the commission will now have a role in participating in whether or not a beneficiary qualifies under certain conditions. I, I think this is a good thing, I think it's good for the commission to have that kind of authority. And by making this less arbitrary, especially in situations where even the staff is not comfortable in making a decision. And as a result of that discomfort, they give the applicant zero. That, to me, is a problem. So anyway, that's, that's part of why we did this committee.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Any other commissioners?
I just had another comment. I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at the same paperwork throughout these steps. That, that then the second step, there's not other information that doesn't fall under the kumu ohana mythology that's being used to make a decision. An example is there's certain organizations that can do indexing to find out, look through names and find out who's related to who. And then do some kind of indexing and, and come up with a different process. I just want to make sure we're using the same values for each step in, in making these decisions. That's my only concern.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Seeing no other comments, we will come back with a staff agenda, agendaized item for approval.
Okay.
Chair?
Oh, sorry, Ryan?
Ryan. I just wanted to confirm, because Jovi put it on the record, this is part one of the committee's report, and there's gonna be a part two?
Yes, that's correct. And then, and then the committee's purpose will be complete.
Okay, okay, and then the agenda items will be submitted, right?
So I guess that's a, a question for you, Ryan, is it possible to, because I know that the committee was eager to bring recommendations forward so that the commission could act, does it require it, the work of the committee to be complete? Before they act?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so in order for there to be actual decision-making on the recommendations, the report needs to be completed.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is that there's gonna be a second report. So the next matter that would be put onto the agenda would be part two of the report.
Yes.
Following that, then there can be commission action.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification, Ryan. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Next agenda item, E two?
Aloha, Chair, Commissioners. Stuart Matznaga again, acting Land Development Division Administrator. E two is an update of development agreement between Hawaiian Homelands and Ikaiko Ohana slash A0597 Kona LP for Hawaiian Homelands rental housing in the villages of Laio Pua. I'll just briefly say that we started this project through a request for proposal process in 2017. And right after this, our developer will be making the presentation. But I wanted to also just Uh, but I wanted to also just, um, mention that we have a little bit of history with a rentwood option to purchase program. Uh, we started this in Kapole. It was a project called Ho Lima Lima. And this is back in the late 90s when Joby was the deputy. And then in 2017, when, uh, Joby was the chair, then we completed the, uh, the sales of 70 houses that were, um, previously under a 15-year rental compliance period. So, um, just with that, um, I wanted to now introduce James Rock with Ikaiko Ohana and, uh, he will provide the, uh, the presentation of the project.
Hello, can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Uh, first, to the members of the commission, the chairman, DHHL staff and all the moving participants, we would like to say thank you for including us today. I'm going to, I'm having Microsoft team issues, so I may have to try to share my screen and continue with the presentation through a screen sharing. Let me see if I can.
James, we can, we can share it from our, our side. We have your PowerPoint.
Okay, we can do it that way as well. Um, along with me today, Delina Sorio. Delina, are you on the call? Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm on the call. It's, it's, we so much appreciate being able to offer you our presentation again. And I do want you to know that I am in Kilauea. So, um, with that, we'll give you back to James because it's been a long day for all of you. Going to love what we have to present. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, my name is James Rock. I'm actually with UHC. We're a partner of Ikaiko Ohana. And together we are bringing, uh, the villages of Laia Pua project with DHHL to the community. And so briefly, if I may, a word on Ikaiko Ohana. Mission of Ikaiko Ohana is to provide decent, safe, sanitary and affordable housing opportunities for low-income households. Community enriching opportunity to enhance the lives of residents. Ikaiko Ohana was founded by the late Loa Kalapa in 2008. And back then, Mr. Kalapa reached out to Mr. Dutch of UHC to see if Ikaiko Ohana, a partner of UHC, could bring more housing to the island. As Ikaiko Ohana and UHC worked together, we realized fit with one another and that our goals were aligned. UHC developer and financial expertise to help Ikaiko Ohana realize its after the passing of Mr. Kalapa, Mr. Bigley decided to continue working with the nonprofit and to continue the vision of Mr. Kalapa and Ikaiko Ohana. Bigley is the president of Ikaiko Ohana. And to UHC, we are providing the affordable housing opportunities such as the 60 units in villages of Laia Pua. And so turning to the presentation, our team, but we have another slide that will give a few more details on our participants with about our concept and the overall timeline for the project. Financial structure used and the financial impacts to the potential residents and buyers. And talk about the tenant services intended to be included with. So for the development team and the roles, the members on the left, the roles right, the team member A0597 Kona LP. It's a single-purpose limited partnership entity with a purpose of utilizing the tax credits and bring forth the development. So this will, pardon me, this will combine the participation of Ikaiko Ohana, UHC, and the investor, which is Hound Capital Partners, to help bring some of the equity to the project. And the entity that's actually borrowing from the state of Hawaii HHFDC and Hawaiian homeland, it will be A0597 Kona LP. And so this limited partnership, it also has an assignment of the development agreement with the rights and responsibilities previously discussed with DHHL. To round out our team, you can see the members designed is our architect firm, RM Towel, the civil engineer. Construction is our general contractor. Partners, as I mentioned, will be the investor for the tax credit equity. Savings Bank is the construction and permanent lender. Council of Cox Castle Nicholson and M4 for short, will provide, uh, legal guidance on the matter. If you can scroll to the next page. So describing the concept in general, uh, the development is based on the February 2019 development agreement that Hawaiian Homelands trust funds of $5 million. Phase of the overall development agreement is the construction of 60 units. Uh, Friday, we have the county's approval on our permits and they are currently calculating the permit fees. So this stance is considered shovel-ready. The remaining units of the development agreement will be considered future phasing and we are discussing financing options with DHHL staff. The 60 units for the first phase are highlighted yellow on the tax map shown and provided by the county. So this is the village for Akau subdivision, which now finalized and recorded through the state and the county. 60 homes from our phase, this Makai for the subdivision and is across the street from the high school. To execute this project, the property will offer the units for rent over a 15-year period, qualified tenants. The will be qualified according to DHHL, Lytech and HHFDC requirements as well as rental industry standards. And the rental industry standards are and a leasing interest or can after the period. This, why this is the homes will be one and two-story homes and reflect what our design team saw in the surrounding community and also reflect some of the feedback we received from, uh, various channels and input when we this chart shows the, the units, if you would. So the individual model numbers are in the far left column. Basically, one through eight. The asterisk by the model number, uh, just means that the model number is also available in a layout. So instead of a left-hand door, it'd be a, for a left-hand entry, it'd be a right-hand entry. The garage may be on the other side, but overall, same. All of our units are at least two-bath and we offer units that have two-bedroom, three-bedroom and four-bedrooms. Units at each of the bedroom sizes that would satisfy ADA and excessive permits. And overall, you can see the available living area, the lanais provided and the garages provided for each type. The schedule that we're working on now, in July of 2020, we received the HHFDC award of funding for the additional 9% tax credits that come package for the project. We are currently working in August 2020 to close out all of the financial requirements for the project. By next month, we hope to start the construction of the homes and turning dirt. Have the contractor ready to go and as long as we get all of the information, the permits paid for, we can be up and running. The anticipated construction period is from, through October of 2021. Units, because this project will be developed in phases, the first units will be available by about February 21. And so as the construction teams roll through the subdivision, some of the units, um, will be turned starting in February. Uh, some of the, the availability of the units, we still need to discuss with the county just to make sure that we have approval to open roads and we don't have any public vehicles crossing. But in general, we have a concept in place that allows the, uh, units to be available in early 2021. The initial tenant financial qualification, that be where the first units are available. And what that allows us to do is to qualify for income purposes, the by the time the first units come online, we can quick rental agreements and allow the tenants to occupy the unit. Following the, uh, initial qualification, we have the rent up and the 15-year operation that'll carry from February of 2021 through December of 2035. At the end of the 15-year rental period will be the unit sales and the conversion to the home for the ultimate purchasers of the units and that'll come in January of 2036. The resources and the cost associated with it. So we have the Lytech proceeds secured, we have a loan secured. We have the DHHL loan proceeds of $5 million. And again, thank you to the commission and to DHHL for the participation. And we of American Savings Bank. And so those resources bring together the fund to construct the project. On the uses side, uh, basically the hard and costs were taken out and coastal construction was the contractor selected and this was the to build out the homes. And the amounts allowed in contingencies and reserves provide flexibility and security that we will be able to get through the development on time. The income and rents that we see today are based on the 2020 income levels. Uh, these may change by the time the first units are the, uh, the income levels are typically published annually. And by February 2021, I believe the 2021, uh, income levels may be available. But the information that we see today, if a four-person household were to apply for the project, the income ranges that we serve are the 30%, 40% or 60% AMI and below. So families, a four-person household, uh, could qualify at just shy of $25,000 for the 30% unit and shy of $50,000 for the 60% unit. These income amounts do adjust based on the household size. And so there is a, a sliding scale depending on the numbers of individuals in the household. Looking at the monthly rents, for the smallest, uh, two-bedroom, 30% unit, the rent is down to $562. And for the four-bedroom, 60%, the rent is at $1,450. These amounts, I believe, are what include the utility allowances. And so the rents will be, the total amount paid by the tenant will be rent plus utility allowances equal the value you see on this table. During the unit sales portion of the project, the existing tenants will have the first option to purchase their units after the rental period. The unit sales are subject to compliance with the Internal Revenue Code, Section 42 standards, and also to the conditions, uh, agreed upon with HHFDC in their board for action. The sales values will continue to be affordable and based on income levels at the time of sale. And so for example, if an individual initially qualifies to rent their unit at a 60% AMI level, then that same 60% standard is applied when calculating the sale value. And ultimately, the formula to determine a unit's sales value is documented in the July 9th, 2020 HHFDC for action. And providing this formula allows all participants the, the clarity of how the values will be calculated. Moving forward and during the, uh, rental portion of the project, we do offer tenant services to help enrich the lives of our tenants. The tenant services will include home buying programs and training courses, home care courses, uh, because as taking over the ownership of the property, just educating them on what that means and how it's different from a rental responsibility. Uh, there will be periodic tenant slash home buyer evaluations, uh, to help encourage the residents to, um, be on the path to purchasing their homes once available after year 15. We also offer educational classes and health and wellness programs just to further round out the positive experiences that our tenants may have and to, uh, just increase the, the benefits to our residents. That is what we have for Ikaiko Ohana. You, please feel free to visit our website or you can direct questions to us, um, or through DHHL staff and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ohana Alvinu, acting administrator, land management division. Uh, item number F4, it's for information only. It's a joint submitted with the planning office and it's for information only, again, of the Moanaluakai redevelopment options, Shafter Flats, Island of Oahu. And I have Alan Yanos from LMD staff, uh, to present.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This presentation is to update the commission on, um, what was presented back in March 2018 when we started our conceptual plans project for Moanaluakai, which is Shafter Flats and Kapalama. Uh, today's briefing will only cover Moanaluakai because the general leases are expiring in about two years. Moanaluakai is zoned under the Oahu Island Plan for industrial use. And primarily their, their long-term lease, general leases that have been issued to generate revenue for the Hawaiian Homelands Trust. There are 20 parcels comprising nearly 14 acres that were acquired from DLNR. So for the tax year 2020, the city and county assessed value of these lands was about $78 million. The leases currently generate about 2.78 million annually and with an additional $460,000 annually from our permities. Nancy, um, are you still there?
Yes, yes, hi.
Nancy is going to cover this, uh, the next several slides.
The location of this property is actually ideal because it's close to Honolulu Harbor and the airport. It's also situated between two rail stations. So it's, um, coming under the city's transit-oriented development planning. It's also going to be, uh, easy for workers to go to and from their jobs on the rail. And, um, close access to H1, Nimitz and Moanaluakai Road. Um, it's also nearly 14 acres in area, um, which is a really large area that close to the airport. So the opportunity for redevelopment So the opportunity for redevelopment is already there, but it's actually also being stimulated by introduction of the rail and the TOD planning. The next slide.
It's not moving.
Okay, well, now you went to okay, we've we've covered TOD before to the commission. So it's it's there's additional planning done by the city and county because of the idea that you can walk from housing to the rail station. So the idea of mixed use is really being promoted and increased densities. Now, it's a little bit more difficult in this area because it's an industrial area. So there's some challenges with that that we will get into in a few slides. So go ahead. Again, the proximity to the rail stations is presenting an opportunity for DHHL. And the city and county's TOD planning efforts are going to guide redevelopment. There will be TOD zoning that we can declare and it will provide incentives for mixed-use higher densities and enhanced amenities. In addition, there will be better coordination with CIP investment, future infrastructure upgrades, and all of that gets wrapped in with responding to sea level rise, which, as you'll see in later slides, is a big concern for this area. Maybe new batteries.
Yeah, seems like it. Pressing too hard, I don't know. Okay, this slide shows the lease expiration dates for the 20 parcels in the Moanaluakai area. And by the way, we we named it Moanaluakai as part of our planning effort. But 17 of the 20 parcels should be available for redevelopment after October 2022. Two ground leases expire in 2025 with one expiring in 2064. A lot of our lessees want to remain, but all of them will be reaching their their leases maximum 55-year term. So by law, we will need to reissue new leases. The leases that are existing cannot be extended any further. So this is a Google aerial view of the area with a lot of warehouses, as you can see. It's close to Moano Street, Moanaluakai Stream. It's right next to the H1 freeway via duck. Our neighbors to the left, at the left of the screen are DOT and DAGs. And the they're they're public, I mean, not public, I'm sorry, private owners on the the parcels to the to the right of the the screen. So this is supposed to give you a taste of what the place looks like. There are two lease expiration dates because when DLNR created the industrial subdivision in the late 60s, they did it in two phases. So that's the reason why you have a group of leases expiring in 2022 and another set expiring in 2025. Flooding and vandalism from the homeless in the area have been common issues for all of the lessees. So this is an example of what the high tides look. And this is during King Tides. Well, the one in August, anyway, August 2017. And this this photograph I took myself because I was at a meeting with some with some consultants at one of our lessees property. And, you know, it was it was virtually a lake. You couldn't pass through. You couldn't even walk on the sidewalks because they were covered in water. And these two photographs show the same, these three photographs are within the same general area near the corner of Kokoi and Keelyhow Street. So the the model, the model that our consultant, PBR in Hawaii, were working on were intended to reposition our properties and increase their income generating capacity. So based on the conceptual plans, groundbreaking for Phase 1 would occur in 2025 with a multi-story building on the Waikiki side of Kokoi Street and four showrooms. Phase 2 would occur in about 2034 after the stabilization of occupancy around 2029. And Phase 2 would include a second multi-story building on the other side of Kokoi Street. Now, take up, this is just one model that was used to to base costs and other and make other projections on. So this is a rendering of what the first phase would look like with the multi-story structure towards the that would cover approximately four or five of the parcels along Kokoi Street. And then you see some small individual showrooms along Keelyhow Street. This is the the rendering when both phases are completed with two huge five-story structures with parking on the top, circular ramps where you could have 18 no, I'm sorry, now 18-wheeler trucks, but you could have cars, you know, and and small trucks go up and down the the floors. The 18-wheelers would be limited to just the the ground level spaces. So the these are examples of multi-story industrial properties that are currently existing in Honolulu. And the one at the bottom left, the Kakaako Business, Kakaako Commerce Center is what we were envisioning for this, for the Moanaluakai area. I'm sorry, but this remote is not, doesn't appear to be working properly. So following the completion of the feasibility report, these are the the findings that you know, were shared with us. You know, there's periodic flooding during high tides and severe weather. It's susceptible to more flood risk due to sea level rise. These are all things that, you know, is well-known, especially the fact that the Shafto Flats area was was created by fill materials over, I believe it was fish ponds in the early part of the century. And there are all these other constraints to development such as the height and noise restrictions because of their location to the airport. So if there are new new structures that need to be built, they would have to be elevated above existing grades. And our consultants' report discloses that there would be enough earth to fill, there would be enough earth fill to elevate the land in the area by another seven feet. There would be special foundations needed, very deep foundations to elevate and secure the ground under these multi-story buildings. Development costs would be very high. And, you know, for this particular model, from a developer's standpoint, even after 15 years, it wouldn't cover development costs. And here you see that based on the conceptual cash flows that for that particular model with these two huge multi-story structures and showrooms, the project would only be able to support permanent financing for 28 to 30% of the development costs. And the rest would have to, the rest of the funds for redevelopment would have to come from other sources. So the report recommended lower-density redevelopment. And as is scenario for parts of the the area where we would leave things as they are and renovate or readapt, we'd consider early termination or restructuring of the existing ground leases and take into consideration the environmental and site conditions that the report uncovered for us. Nancy, would you like to cover the rest?
Sure. So we examined different options to be considered. And we came up with these four. We can try to formulate further options. Go ahead and proceed with the RFP for a master developer. Proceed with a scaled-down version, more limited redevelopment, or seek an exchange or sale for the lands. Whoa, whoa, we skipped one. And this is why we might want to exchange it. There is going to be significant sea level rise in the area for those properties. We're already seeing the effects at high tide events, during high tide events. And we're talking about the end of the century, or, well, even a 2050 extreme scenario. Groundwater inundation might pose another even greater threat and contribute to higher flood levels. So there's kind of multiple variables that are happening. Groundwater is just three feet beneath the surface. That was discovered during a soil boring in 2018 on one of the Keelyhow Street parcels. And the groundwater is responsive to tides, rainfall, surface water runoff. Our parcels are generally four to six feet above mean sea level. But some areas, particularly the road, are, you know, below sea level. Again, it's fill and it could be sinking even. We are mandated now by city mandate to plan for 3.2 feet of sea level rise. And under that extreme scenario, our parcels that are only four feet above mean sea level, which would be those along Keelyhow Street and the other side of Kokoi Street, will be underwater. And again, as Andrew was talking about earlier, there's a lot of variability. The scenarios keep changing. So under a lower intermediate scenario, the three-foot sea level rise would occur beyond the year 2100. And the city is still working on their plans for infrastructure in the area. We're concerned about access from the roads if the roads aren't elevated. It's it's already a challenge and truckers and people driving their vehicles are, you know, have high corrosion levels from the saltwater that their vehicles are driving through. Okay. So, yeah, under under extreme scenario, this could be happening as soon as 2070 or 2080. What the city's recommendation is now is for long-term CIP and critical infrastructure, that the six-foot sea level rise scenario is is what you plan for. So looking at Maoka Access is something that we've considered. There are those state-owned properties that are Maoka of our properties. So we would need to enter into discussions with DAGs and DOT, but there's potential there. There's a grant application in right now to study the area and make recommendations about projects to improve resiliency for Mapuna Puna, but we won't know until November if that grant is actually won. But the report will explore combinations of engineered and nature-based infrastructure to mitigate the flooding. We could then adjust our recommendations based on the results of that study. But it's going to be several years before that's completed. And we still have to deal with the fact that we have leases that are expiring. Okay.
These are the three recommendations that we'd like to pursue further. Seek an exchange or sale for Moanaluakai. We're still consulting with the Attorney General's Office on the legal matters regarding these these options. The other would be to determine if there's any interest by master developer to develop, redevelop the area. There may be other models that may pencil out. So, you know, we have to seek out that that entity that may be outside of the state or international that may have the wherewithal, the technology, or the you know, the creativity to overcome these development challenges, redevelopment challenges. And meanwhile, we would plan for further limited redevelopment, you know, very modest, reusing the same structures, short-term general leases, things of that nature. So the next steps that we will be doing or pursuing would be the sale and option, sale and exchange options. We do a, we're working right now on a request for information to determine if there's any interest from potential master developers. We'd plan for the issuance of short-term dispositions for parcels with leases that's going to be expiring soon. We'll conduct further planning and additional due diligence. And we'll also continue to participate in the city and county airport area transit-oriented development planning process. So if there is any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, so my question is, who in their right mind want to exchange this land? Because if that person exists, he's
We'll have to find somebody that's looking to build a new harbor. I was hoping to ask Commissioner Kaupu if he would be willing to sit down with staff and just tell us, you know, is our is it really a possibility that there be a master developer that would come in? that would come in and mitigate sea level rise and be able to pull off a project economically, say for a sixty-five-year lease? So that's a conversation that I think if you would be willing to have with staff, maybe we could do a, a teams meeting and just pick your brain. If we're in the ballpark or if we're way off and we need to consider something else.
Sure.
Okay, we'll contact you maybe next week sometime.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Agenda item G2, we're almost there, Commissioners.
We're just trying to get everyone in shape for when we return to normal session. Commissioners, item G2 for information only. At a previous commission meeting, there was a request from a commissioner to give more information to the commission about the UH CTAR Hilo Extension Agent. And we also felt it was a good time to update the commission on the department's efforts with regards to the agriculture program planning process. With that, we have Julie Pachola, who has been the lead in our planning office for this effort.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems that we've talked about agriculture a lot, but agriculture is a mainstay of the program or what the Homeless Commission Act was all about. Today, we have three, three things we want to do. We want to provide a brief overview of why agriculture is important, you know, go back to the act because I think we kept. Is that me making noise? And we'll share some, I want to share some basic data for you guys. We're all on the same page on the foundation. And I'll go really fast. And we have Kristen Akahoshi in Hilo standing by. She is our CTAR agent that works with our homestead ag lessees there. She will be presenting her two-year report. Thank you for, Commissioner Kaupu for requesting that. And then we're going to end with just an update on what we're doing with the agricultural program plan. Does this advance to? Left. Yep. Okay, all right. Okay, so the purpose is. So people look at me when I go back to this kind of thing when we're looking about the origins of the act. But for agriculture, you know, I mean, it's, it's important because Makuhio really had an idea. If you think about, I don't know how, how many of you know about that population decline curve that shows all of the Hawaiians dying from all these diseases and stuff. And if you look at his lifetime, you know, when he was living, he was right there at the very bottom, watching all of this happen to his people. And he was, you know, he's compelled to like do something. He's, he's in this position where he needs to do something for his people. He's seen all of this death and these statistics, terrible statistics. And I think the thing that sticks out for him is looking at these tenement housing, right? In, in urban Honolulu, and they're sharing rooms and there's all this disease and it, you know, and he's like, this is not right. These guys own land. They need to have land in their own country. So he, this is, this is the basis of what he's trying to do. Okay, thank you. So I think we have one more. Sorry, forward. One more. Okay. So he, he basically comes to some conclusions. He realizes that the Hawaiians are supposed to be outdoors. We're seafaring, we're agriculture people. We don't deserve, we don't, we, we're not supposed to be in these like urban settlements. He realizes that everything is changing, everything is changing. You know, and that is evidenced, and we're not faring too well at this point because of all of the, the data on disease and death. And he concludes that in order to save this race, you know, and his obligation is kuliana to his people, that he needs to put them back in connection with the land. And, and, and that is fundamental for him that he needed not only just to be on the land, he needed them to get, to touch the land, to be able to touch the earth. And I feel like, you know, in his mind, it's, it was coded in our DNA. And he felt that as soon as they get back on the land, all of that stuff would come rushing back as to what, what we're supposed to be doing. Go ahead. So he had, you know, all of these different clubs and groups that would go out because it was so bad. They would actually go out, like how we do for our homeless people now. They would go out to administer aid, you know, band aids, help them, you know, sanitize their wounds, whatever. They would go out and do these social services. And this group, he took all the way to Congress. And he's saying, okay, there's some elements that need to be here. First of all, there needs to be a land base. And he also draws the, the conclusion that this is part of a rightful claim. So it's not just about land, it's, it's about the claim to our inheritance, our trust lands, our kuliana. And then he also says, look, some money has to be there because some capital to help the people. They can't do it on their own. There needs to be experts in agriculture that help them along, right? And that help them to be productive. And then he gets back to the soil, right? Because you really, the connection to soil and place is fundamental for him. So, and on that basis, he talks about rehabilitation. This is how we're going to rehabilitate our people and bring the race back. So that, and he talks about being a minority in your own land and not having own land in your own, you know, place. And that, I think he finds that very wrong. So he's trying to create a, a land base for him. So our lands, this is what we have now. Eighty-four percent of our leases are residential. Only twelve percent are with agriculture. In terms of where we are on islands, it looks like a pretty even distribution in, in certain respects of where our lands are, are leases. But there's a lot on Oahu. This I usually do as a pie chart to show what the percentages are in terms of our lessees and our applicants. But it does, a pie chart doesn't show the order of magnitude that we're talking about, the differences between those on the land, which are the green, the lessie, the agricultural lessees versus the pink, which are the agricultural weightless on each island. That's the demand, that's the order of magnitude what we're looking at. I'd like to see, so when we look at the opportunity of doing an agricultural program plan, this is where a lot of different innovations can converge, right? We have the ability to do different things like exemptions, to be creative in how we look at land settlement. We have agriculture that has an economic component. You know, we're in the time of COVID right now, there's these aina aloha alternate economic futures that have been developing the same. If we're going to reconstruct our economic future, let's do it on our terms, right? And they're trying to look at how do we reconstruct this? So I think agriculture for our homesteads has the intersect of, you know, economic development as well as, you know, just people homesteading on the land. It also has a component of community use. So you're not going to just do it by yourself. That there's a community component. There's community facilities that would assist in, in that effort. So if you look at it that way, we really haven't given this, we haven't given our ag program that kind of opportunity to excel in this way. We do have our CTAR agents, which will come up. But, you know, we really haven't given it a real targeted look at this. The rest of this is really fast. I just wanted to, I have more data than I know what to do with. And this, this graphic, I just wanted to show you the average lot sizes for these different areas. We have eleven agricultural homesteads statewide. And you'll see, and I've given you the numbers so you can see order of magnitude, how many lessees we're talking about. And in this graphic, you can see average lot size for those areas. And there's three different indicators of ag viability, you know, just looking at the land. There's the Alish, the LSB, and the Lisa. These are different studies that were done in the past that resulted in maps that help us categorize the utility of the lands in terms of agricultural production. Go ahead. This is an important data because when you look at where are, where are our ag lands, we have land use designations and three of them pertain to ag, which is the general ag, subsistence ag, and supplemental agricultural land use designations. So what I've done here is just, just add them up for each island. How many general ag acres do we have zoned? How many subsistence ag, supplemental ag, and add them up? So we can see this, these are our land, our agricultural lands. And then you can see at the end the percentage of the island. So I've identified the island land base so that you can generate the percentage. So we find like a big island, eighteen percent of the lands are zoned for agriculture. Kauai doesn't have as much lands, but Kauai's lands, seventy-two percent of the lands are zoned or designated for agriculture. Right? So I mean, that's just kind of looking at where are, where would we be looking agriculture? Go ahead. So talk about our CTAR contract. This contract has been going on for over twenty-five years. We have had this relationship with the college, with UH College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Relations. They have an extension service, which is their ag extension service, or community extension service, which is where they provide actually assistance to people outside of the UH. These are farmers or, you know, people that want to do agriculture, that want to have their soil tested. And so they provide these outreach services. What we do is we contract with CTAR and we give them money to hire basically a full-time person, a CTAR ag agent that exclusively works for our agricultural lessees or our beneficiaries. So we do separate contracts for each area. So we have one with Hilo. We used to have one with Molokai. We had one with Kauai. We had three full-time people and all they do is they're assisting our agricultural lessees and beneficiaries. I was going to say, but this, I don't know, some more things. So right now we only have one dedicated ag extension agent, that's Kirsten. And so she's going to present her report that she usually does in writing, but she'll present it today for you. So I think that's going to be exciting. I guess Kirst, you have to release. Do you release? While he's doing that, you know, we had planned to provide, to show you folks our ag video, which we're kicking off, which is available now for all of our lessees. And they've been watching this video and taking our survey, which we'll discuss. But, you know, I know it's very late, so they're telling us, next, the, next the video thing. But I just want to make sure if you guys have seen this video because it is really, really well done by Cedric. Cedric and his team did it and it is excellent, really, really excellent. It hits the nail on the head. And if you haven't seen it and want to see it, we could perhaps see it now, but you can see it on your own time too. Hi Kirsten. She's so excited about giving this presentation. Are you okay? Oh, unmute.
Sorry about that. Aloha from Hilo. Super excited, bundle of nerves, all of that stuff. Um, so thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I have been asked to cover the activities that I've done in the past two years. This is this last contract. So first, by the numbers, and why isn't, okay, first by the numbers. Numbers, I mean, they look nice, but they don't say much. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background and context before I talk more about these. So a little bit about cooperative extension. We are the outreach component of the College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources of the University of Hawaii at Manoa. A cooperative extension extends practical applications of science to support local food systems, healthy living, youth development, and the stewardship of natural resources for future generations. We provide non-formal, science-based education to enrich the lives and livelihoods of farmers, consumers, and families in Hawaii. Extension is a statewide program with county extension agents and specialists located throughout the state. There are twenty-nine off-campus facilities, including experiment stations, which encompass all the different microclimates in Hawaii and extension offices. We address high priority areas in agriculture, natural resources, and family and community extension as well. The CES is a partnership between local, state, and federal governments, which allow local agents to leverage the power of a national system to bring science-based knowledge to the public. So during the past two years, I've networked with faculty at CTAR covering disciplines, including agribusiness, animal production, floriculture, food safety, forestry, horticulture, nutrition, orchard crops, and range management to provide answers to specific questions, to provide workshops, and to provide resources and materials to homesteaders. By networking with faculty, I've been able to leverage resources from Hawaii County, the State Department of Ag, the State Department of Health, the Produce Safety Alliance, which is part of Cornell University, and the USDA. The existing relationship between a lot of these extension agents and commercial farms have allowed myself and homesteaders access to these commercial farms for both demonstrations and for, to answer some questions. So while I do provide island-wide coverage, I tend to focus on three major ag areas. In alphabetical order, it's Makua, Panaeva, and Waimea. They each have unique challenges and opportunities, which does affect the individual topics and projects that I address within this program. I am aware that Kua'ua is an agricultural area, but they do not engage as much, and I've tried. So beginning with Makua, they do have a vibrant farmer's market. It's very active and they have a lot of participation. They are also very near Pahu'a Town, which provides an opportunity with the retail there with restaurants and retail shops. And one of the, probably their biggest challenge is that they are on top of Blue Rock. So the rock is very close, it's at or near the surface. Blue Rock, sorry, is the interior of A'A flows. It's really dense, hard, and solid. So the ground isn't very workable. It limits the things they can do in the ground. So on to Panaeva, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to rush through these. So Panaeva's opportunities, they are, have real close proximity to tourism because there's the port where the cruise ships come in, of course, pre-pandemic. And of course, the airport, again, pre-pandemic. And then proximity to Hilo Town, which provides a lot of retail opportunities. They're, one of their challenges with the ground is that they are also on rocky soils. At CTAR, when we do the soil form, we call this A'A in terms of texture or density. So in this picture, I wanted to show this, this ground here. Give me one moment. Okay. This ground here actually had to be ripped by machine to be able to plant these plants. And that's what I mean by it's harder to work. Again, just like Makua, it limits what can be done in the ground. Waimea, they are the highest elevation and they also have neighboring farms, farmers, sorry, commercial farms, which provides both opportunities and challenges, opportunities in that there is existing infrastructure to support the farmers, but challenges in that there is nearby competition and it could pose pest threats as well with a higher pest pressure because of all the neighboring farms. Probably the, sorry, few opportunities is, this is a peony. It's a temperate floriculture crop. So because of the high elevation, Waimea has the unique opportunity to be able to grow temperate crops like peaches, like this beautiful peony. And they are geographically near the high-end retail resort areas, which provides opportunities for high-value crops. They also do have lovely dirt. One of their challenges is that they are the furthest away from any transportation hub like big airports or the ports. Okay, moving on educational topics. So I select educational topics based on these. So regional needs is, for example, identify pests in an area, consistent reports. So regional needs is, for example, identify pests in an area, consistent reports from homesteaders in that area of a specific issue, or if there's any neighboring farmer issues. And then I can address that in educational top, as, as a topic. I do also ask for participant feedback when I hold events. You can't really read it, but that's there where I ask them what other topics or events they'd be interested in. I do also ask for feedback from community homestead associations. This is the Waimea Hawaiian Homestead Association, Makuau Farmers Association, and KPSA. I do also get some feedback from their neighboring residential associations. I get feedback from community leaders regarding topics. I also do topics based on current events such as hurricanes or food safety outbreaks. And to reach, to engage homesteaders who do not normally engage with me, I also choose some novelty topics such as vegetable grafting with this weird tomato potato thing going on. This is because it may not be commercially viable, but it gets people engaged and starts the dialogue with me if I don't normally have that opportunity. Which leads to engagement. So when I do workshops, I do maintain an email list of people who provide me their emails. When I do advertise for my, sorry, the email list, I also send out blasts on any events that I think are relevant, that the homesteaders may like to attend. I do send my own events out to district offices. I also let the community associations know. And I maintain an online calendar for, for those who can access it. I mean, I maintain an online calendar and that is always going out in my emails and anyone can access it. It is public. And then again, to reach those people who I would otherwise not have a way to reach, I attend public gatherings. So this is the community meetings, association meetings, the on-island commission meetings, and I do tabling at events like this at the Waimea Hawaiian Homestead Farmer's Market. And I do also do tablings at some ag events. Okay. So back to the numbers. I've had over eleven hundred homesteader contacts, sixty-two workshops, twenty-one completed farm plans. This is only in the past two years, so keep that in mind. Forty office visits, that's where homesteaders come to my office, either here or I, before COVID, I was holding monthly office hours in Waimea. So it was either here or Waimea. And over seventy farm visits where I go out to their farm. And that's to do diagnos- diagnostics, just to look at their farm, to give them advice, to look at how their setup is. Again, numbers are one thing, but I wanted to share some feedback. So this feedback is kind of, I take all the responses and I'm aggregating them into these categories. So with this one, by increased confidence in computer skills, this is they are, they feel better about using Word documents, sorry, Word processing, spreadsheet programs, you, yes, using these to further whatever they're doing. Increased confidence in food safety is they feel better about their own food, the food that they are growing, and the food they are buying. This one is, I'm sure you guys have seen those funny videos like Blossom where it's like ag stuff. A lot of those are pretty sensationalized and, and very fake. So with this one, the, these people, the people responding feel better about, oh, sorry, did I lose you guys?
Yes, Kirsten, we need you to reshare your presentation.
Is it back? Okay. Reliable information on the internet, it's just they can vet any information they got. Let's see. More awareness of technical and natural systems, and then I can also work with them if they choose to pursue any of these. I love this one, better quality of life. They're telling me that they feel healthier and they feel that they're eating better because they're growing their own food, they're working outdoors. They value the stuff they eat better, so I'm totally excited by that one. You know, taking care of the soil, like Julie was mentioning, taking care of the ground is very important, so they've gained knowledge and awareness, increased skill in propagating their own plants, so they're able to grow what they want. And a broader awareness of agriculture. What I mean by this is a lot of people start off with a very narrow idea of agriculture in terms of agriculture is growing food, and a lot of them strictly think vegetables, right, the, the ground crops. Broadening their awareness of agriculture is introducing orchard crops, mixed farming systems, which is also including animals for waste and nutrient management, including floriculture and, and nursery, nursery crops in terms of thinking about agriculture, so not strictly food. But the biggest one that I get is that there's just an increased interest in any sort of agricultural activity on their homestead. Yay. Okay, so this is what they're reporting, but how about what they're actually doing? And so in informal and formal follow-ups, these are the things that I am noticing. So this is showing some changes in attitude. So informal follow-ups are either deliberate visits or discussions after the workshop. This is informal discussions, if I just run into them in town, or we run into each other at events. Farm visit observations for when they invite me onto their farms, or volunteered information. I get some people call me up and it's just like, hey, look what I'm doing. So that is submitting samples. They're submitting samples to me and I use the Agricultural Diagnostic Service Center at UH at Citar to, we do soil testing, pest and disease diagnostics, nutrient measuring, and we were doing water testing, I'm not sure if we're still doing that. I noticed people propagating plants, this is cuttings, air layerings. They're, they are growing food, either in gardens or starting, starting orchard. They're maintaining orchard crops, that's mostly what I'm saying is they're pruning, which is a skill that they've learned in, in a workshop. They're using soil amendments and using them responsibly, fertilizers, compost, things of glimming the soil. They're using the internet to vet information. So they read something that looks promising and they know how to go through it and make sure that it actually is reliable. And raising livestock, where they weren't raising livestock before. All right, so that's just the past two years. I did wanna share things that I've noticed since I started six years ago. It does not feel that long. So I have, I mean, I, I just don't know how else to share this, then I have seen the homesteaders that I work with just grow. I am incredibly just proud of them and happy. I have seen people go from not doing anything and barely interested to now they are actually teaching their communities. When I do workshops, they're helping the participants like they're, they're a second teacher, because they have picked up this information and they have internalized it and they're just excited to share it as much as I am. I have seen people go, so a lot of times it's right, that narrow idea of agriculture, as I'm introducing other things that agriculture are, they get more excited about it. So I have a homesteader who has tried a bunch of different things, and now what makes them happy is they have chickens. Like, it took that to make them excited about agriculture and I'm so happy to see these changes. And that's why I stress the need for time. In two years, I could not have told you this in, in just two years. Right? These are long-term changes that took time to occur. So with that, sorry, I really rushed through that just because, yeah, time. I did have the video, but I heard we're gonna skip it, so.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Kalapu?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Julie. A question for your, have you, have you, if you're, if you're, like, a farm bureau or other special associations?
I'm, I'm just gonna repeat that to make sure I heard it right. It was a lot of feedback. You're asking if I have heard of any homesteaders joining farming associations?
Or Farm Bureau?
I would say I know directly of two.
Yeah, and. That's the problem that I see because we, we kind of have people that have agricultural lots, but they're, they don't associate with other farmers. And usually people that are in the farming industry, they'll join Farm Bureau, they'll join these different associations that they, that also grow the same crops as they do. And, and it's, they kind of self-select where they wanna, where they wanna join. And, and I appreciate everything that you do, and I just wondering, how do we get to that next step where they go from, we got this land to, you know, joining the Farm Bureau? Because that's, that's where a lot of the expertise is, is with other farmers who are doing the same thing. So, and then my next question is, how many of our beneficiaries engage with all of the other extension agents that you had on your map? Thanks.
Engaging directly?
Yeah, with, with the other extension agencies. So you're, we hire you full-time, but there's all of these other extension agents, agencies that are out there. And I'm just wondering, how often do our, our beneficiaries interact with them?
Actually, I would say a decent amount. And the reason why I say that is my background is tropical horticulture and business. So anytime I have an issue with entomology stuff or forestry, native plants, things that my background doesn't give me the information on, I help them connect with the agents who are the experts. So I would say a good eighty percent I know for a fact have engaged with other extension agents.
Okay, thanks. And you, can you tell me about the next step, when, when you would expect that, or, or what we could do to encourage?
Sorry, next step?
Yeah, where, where our beneficiaries engage with other farmers that are in the industry, in the light industry. So, you know, there's the floriculture, there's a lot of people in Puna and up Mountain View that grow flowers and have done it successfully. And I, and I guess the next step is where our beneficiaries try and emulate or associate with people that are in the industry that have done, done well, so that our beneficiaries can also be successful.
Good example of this is our, our, McDamian at, what's his name, in Panaeva. He's, he was so, he was so good that he became the president of these, that association, right, from McDamian Nuts, and he was, he did that for many, many years. But I think it's a function of when they get to that level of excellence and they feel, you know, they can participate that way, then they would. I think Randy's a good example of that. But yeah, that's a good point, where we're going with this. And with the agriculture program plan, that's the thing, what constitutes success, right? Where, what, you know, what, where are we going with this? And so that, that this opportunity of developing an ag program plan will help us flesh that out too, you know, and have a range of different options. Sorry, Andrew.
So I was just gonna say, in terms of next steps, those are some of the questions that we wanted to answer through the ag, agriculture plan, planning process. How do we increase the number of successful native Hawaiian farmers on Hawaiian homelands? That's the basic preference, premise of the plan. It's a people plan, not a land use plan. So it'll focus on what are the programmatic supports? What are some of the partners that we can help to identify and connect with our beneficiaries? Those are the types of questions we wanna get, get to through the planning process. Just real quickly, we had two previous planning efforts for this planning process. One was last year in October 2019. We partnered with the Ag Leadership Foundation of Hawaii, hosted a one-day conversation with our ag lessees and selected ag applicants. The second initiative we launched in late July and August was a survey of our ag applicants statewide and all of our ag lessees statewide. To date, we've had about five hundred eighty respondents, the majority of which are applicants, which is encouraging because a lot of times the applicant voice isn't necessarily the loudest voice, but in terms of this survey, the applicant voice has been a lot greater than the lessee voice. About eighty percent of the responses were applicants to date. Looking, looking ahead in terms of the planning process, the survey should be filed by the end of this month. We'll analyze the results, we'll come back to the commission with the results. We'll also develop a planned framework in the fall. We plan to have a first round of beneficiary consultation meetings in late October, early November. They will probably be virtually, most likely will be virtual, virtual, which actually allows us a different way to outreach. Because normally when we do a statewide planning process, we do the meetings by geography. But I think in this case, we can do meetings by cohort, because a lot of what we found so far is that there are different levels in which our beneficiaries are at in terms of agriculture, in terms of skill and capacity. There are certain beneficiary and lessees who are excellent farmers, who are very successful commercially, but there are also existing lessees and applicants who are beginning. So I think we can, by doing it virtually, we can outreach with a cohort of beneficiaries across the state by their skill level versus by their geography. Just to cut to the chase, we hope to have a draft plan to present to the commission in the spring of next year, and then final approval of a plan by June 2021.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissions? Thank you, Kirsten. Keep up the good work.
How can we get the link to them for this video? Okay. We'll email you the link. It's seventeen minutes long. It's, it would be totally worth it for you guys to check it out. It's the precursor. We sent out fourteen thousand postcards to our ag beneficiaries and said, check out this video. And then that's the seventeen-minute video. It kind of gets them in the right framework to take the survey. And so the survey is linked at the end of the video. It's an online survey. So I would really like folks to check that out. It's really well done. Thank you to Cedric and his team.
Since Julie wants you to watch it, she's gonna get you all the links.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next agenda item is G3.
Commissioners, item G3, update on the Kauaupapa management, Kauaupapa County, I went to Molokai. Nancy McPherson will be giving the presentation.
Yes, so, Commissioners, I'm going to share our point. And I apologize, there's a lot of noise going on outside my house, so it might get a little noisy. Wait a sec. A little tricky here. Is it, is it sharing? Can you see? Okay. All right. And the problem with that is, okay. So the National Park Service is finalizing their general management plan. That has sort of triggered, or, or an urgency, a sense of urgency to give the commission an update because you haven't been updated since 2015. Yeah.
On your computer there, you've gotta hit the square box on the right-hand side next to the X to make your screen big for us so that we can see it.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, then it's.
Or the, or to, or put it into presentation mode. It's really small on the screen.
I'm doing that and, okay.
There you go.
Okay. Now I can't see anything else, but, okay. We'll just wing it. I'll make this quick. So we also have beneficiaries who have been requesting that the commission be updated. So that's what we're doing today. I'll make this quick because it's been a long day. A little bit of history, for those who don't know, there's three Ahukua'a in Kauaupapa within the National Historic Park, also Waikolu Valley. Also Waikolu Valley traditionally provided resources because it had perennial streams and Loi Kalo. The traditional name is Maconalua and it's been settled for over nine hundred years. There was a major battle on the peninsula in the early seventeen hundreds when over the centuries Maui has, you know, taken over Molokai and then Oahu has and it's kind of gone back and forth. It's a very interesting history, but at that time, the Oahu chiefs and the Konisai chiefs took control of Kalapapa. It's translated as a flat plain, but it also may refer to reef flats and it was known for the Loi of Waikolu, for Uala for the sweet potato, for the salt fishing and the kappa making. And also is considered one of the most intact and extensive complexes of cultural sites. So the Hansen's Disease was recognized between the twenties and the forties as being present in Hawaii. The Board of Health was created in eighteen fifty by Kawike Aulani and King Kamameha the fifth, Lota Kapuiva, passed the promoted the act in eighteen sixty five to prevent the spread of leprosy. So starting in sixty five, sixty six and over the next hundred years plus, over eight thousand patients were isolated at Kalapapa. At one time, the settlement had over a thousand residents. In eighty nine, they were moved from Kalawau side to Kalapapa. And in nineteen sixty nine, because of the advent of sulfa drugs, their forced isolation was ended and they were allowed to leave or and to come back by choice. The county of Kalawau was created in nineteen oh five along with the other counties and it's administered by the Department of Health. The mayor of Kalawau County is actually the chairman of the Department of Health. And DOH's presence will continue as long as there are still Hansen's Disease patient residents. They have a right of return if they leave their homes. In nineteen twenty one, the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act was passed and Kalapapa was included. The language of the act has been interpreted by the state to mean that only the Ahupua' of Kalapapa, which is where the settlement is located, current settlement is located, is considered Hawaiian homelands. In the nineteen seventies, there were concerns about long term preservation and maintenance. And so the National Historic Park was created in nineteen eighty by an act of Congress. And in nineteen ninety two, National Park Service entered into a fifty year general lease with DHHL, which expires in twenty forty one. And the lease rent currently is two hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. These are some maps that show the location of the historic park and boundary and land ownership. So the area that's in blue here is what's owned by Hawaiian homelands and it also this is the National Park Service boundary, National Historic boundary includes Palau. So these are the agencies that have Kuliana in Kalapapa. There's quite a few. We manage the general lease. We have an island plan. We do interagency coordination and transition planning and we coordinate beneficiary outreach and consultation. Department of Health is still managing a number of buildings. They manage programming, visitors and tours and still have a lot of resources under their control. They provide a lot of services for the patients, do all the record keeping and administer the applicable laws. There's actually a sheriff and right now that's the superintendent. National Park Service is gradually taking over a lot of the infrastructure, so they're managing water, fuel distribution, electrical waste management, the roads. And they're doing historic preservation and restoring the historic structures. They do a lot of work restoring the cemeteries, maintenance, signage, fire suppression, first aid, rescue operations. There have been a number of accidents, people falling off the trail, getting injured on the trail. And there's an airport, so that's state DOT. DLNR manages the conservation and forest reserve areas and there's a natural area reserve, Pootualii, that they manage. And then Maui County has a mutual aid agreement with Department of Health and NPS and they provide emergency response. So since April of twenty sixteen, we've been participating in the interagency working group. Most of these agencies attend. We have a bunch of our divisions are involved and and also meet regularly and brief the chairman. We've mainly been focusing on logistics, management and jurisdictional issues. The electrical system needs upgrading. Just figuring out who actually owns the electrical system has taken a while. It's it's these things came from the kingdom and then, you know, the territory. So a lot of records were burned up at one point. Department of Health lost a lot of their records. So some some of this is pretty challenging. The main thing we're looking at is trying to, you know, mitigate any challenges that could impact a smooth transition once Department of Health is is no longer there. So a lot of it is, you know, historic research and just figuring out what what's what. We have a Molokai Island Plan. Most of the area under the settlement is special district. And we also have conservation. We have two community use areas. And we have some commercial up in Palau in the state park that's actually not within the national park. And the Molokai Regional Plan has discussion of Kalapapa, but there are no priority projects for this area. This is a land use summary, kind of describing in numbers what was shown on the map. In order to to implement the special district, we'll need guidelines. And the idea that came up during the island plan was to do a Pootualua, a place of refuge. So that is still being explored. And then the idea of the five acres of commercial use in Palau to create a cultural community center is something that should also be pursued. The National Park Service has been doing their general management plan since two thousand nine. We started doing beneficiary consultation in twenty eleven. We held two rounds because they had a preliminary alternatives phase and then a preferred alternative phase. So we did two beneficiary consultation meetings during each of those rounds. Then we presented submittals to the commission, which have been attached to your submittal, Exhibits A and B. And that includes all the beneficiary comments and how we responded to them. And then we submitted letters to the National Park Service. We've submitted three comment letters. And they changed their level of NEPA review in late twenty eighteen from an EIS to an EA, evidently because it's a smaller park and the National Park Service felt it didn't need that higher level of review of an EIS. So that that has caused some consternation and, you know, trouble kind of communicating what that means exactly. All the related documents for the planning for the National Historic Park is can be downloaded from the National Parks website. They have identified management zones. Oh, shoot, this isn't the right map. Okay, there's a different there's a different map for the management zones. I apologize, that's incorrect map. So mainly what they have is they have areas that, you know, where visitors would go. They have areas that are more, you know, being conserved. There's cultural sites that are still being documented, et cetera. And so there's not going to be just visitors just allowed to run all over the place. And then there's going to be programmatic additional planning done to basically guide, you know, how visitors can use the the park, how people can stay at the park, if there's overnight stays allowed, et cetera. So these are some of the some of the feedback we got over the years from our beneficiaries. There's concerns about, you know, how many people would be allowed to come down there, particularly access by our beneficiaries for traditional and customary practices and subsistence, preference for training and employment concessions, and just the ability to provide input and share cultural knowledge and, you know, be active partners with the management of the park. And, you know, I believe that this current iteration of the plan does reflect the preferred alternative is to promote partnerships and realizing that they aren't, you know, they don't have the money to fund everything they need to do. So a lot of it is going to have to be partnerships with the community, with interested nonprofits, you know, stewardship, you know, interaction, restoration of the Loi, all that sort of thing. But, you know, concern about just carrying capacity. And also consistent outreach and communication with, you know, Ohana, with with beneficiaries in particular. One thing that was very controversial was the proposal to include Pelikunu Valley and Puohoku ranch lands in the National Historic Park boundary and that was dropped. So the National Park Service responded by, you know, basically dropping that proposal. So the we did say that there needed to be more time for comment and because there was a federal shutdown, that was actually provided. So we have gotten requests from beneficiaries to form a stakeholder beneficiary working group. There's been some criteria for the composition of the group that's been proposed. Kaohana of Kalapapa, you know, has a strong history and relationship with Ohana lineal descendants of patients and extensive extensive knowledge of the history. Right now, they're trying to do their monument, memorial in Kalau for many, many of the patients who, you know, there's there's unmarked graves. There's hundreds of unmarked graves in Kalapapa. And so it's a more memorial for for all the patients who passed there. Beneficiaries who are on the Molokai Island waiting list, we'd like to engage with them or representative for them. Beneficiaries who have family members buried at Kalapapa and beneficiaries who participated in the section one oh six consultation. It's also being strongly suggested that we update the commission at more regular intervals, so we're definitely planning on doing that. And so, questions?
I have questions.
Okay, Commissioner Awol?
I think first I want to say
I'm really sorry. It's very unfortunate.
You know, I just want to say before I begin that I think this day was far too long. And and I think we should consider, I can only speak for myself because I don't know how others feel. But, you know, these these presentations are very important, very valuable. And it's only I don't think it's fair to the presenters if I'm starting to lose my attention span because I'm I'm experiencing fatigue on this virtual conference. So I would just ask that there be consideration to breaking it up into two shorter days rather than one long day. But I'm going to move past that and get into my concerns about about this National Park Service so-called partnership. Because, you know, Nancy, when I read through the documents provided, there's a lot of mana'o that was provided by the communities. And I think the department did a really good job in seeking information from the community. But it appears that National Park Service has not incorporated a lot of the mana'o that was provided, number one. Number two, what really and I'm trying to fast forward through this quickly because I know it's late. But but one thing that jumps out at me is when they made a decision to go from an EIS to an EA. And in fact, it was so alarming, Joby Mazakatani said so in a letter to them. And it says here, now that draft GMP has been formulated and the GMP issued as an EA instead of an EIS, DHHL recognizes substantive adjustments to GMP. But DHHL is somewhat dismayed that after so many years of dedicated participation by this agency as well as the beneficiaries and the gradual building of a good faith relationship with National Park Service, no consultation with DHHL was conducted prior to such a major shift in approach. So so that really concerns me. And what that appears to do by going to an EA, it sets the stage for them to come to us, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, to come to us to review or approve a FONZI, findings of no significant impact. And that troubles me a great deal. And one of the things that they're saying, if I'm reading this correctly, one of the criteria they are they are citing, completion of scoping demonstrates that there is no public controversy concerning potential environmental effects. But I think it's Joby further down. There has been public controversy, primarily reflected in comments from native Hawaiians concerning potential cultural impact. So I find this so disturbing and I spoke to Valerie Monson, Kaohana of Kalapapa and De Gray. And what she said in the very beginning, I don't know if it was back in nineteen eighty when when it became a national park and that was the result of the residents seeking that designation. Because I think at that time, their concern was possible development of Kalapapa by outside interests. And Valerie said at that time, the National Park Service was far more receptive to community input, far more interested in a real partnership. But all these years later, that has changed because superintendents changed, the politics that affect the agency changed. And now they've been largely left out. So, you know, I'm kind of at the point, and this may be an extreme reaction, just going through all of this. You know, what's required for us to cancel the general lease? Because it's just really troubling for me that they're not acting in good faith. So it could be an overreaction. You've been at this much longer than me, but there are red flags jumping out. So that's my mana'o.
Nancy, Chair was gonna respond.
Sorry, sorry, I was muted. Randy, I just want to say I don't know the answer to your question of what it would take to. Randy, I just wanted to say I don't know the answer to your question of what it would take to cancel the general lease. We'd have to see, we'd have to see if there are any violations of the conditions. I don't know, but I also hear your frustration. So maybe you're saying that in frustration? But we could look at it and get back to you.
I think, I think the point you raised though is a good point is that they are R-SE and we should hold them accountable to the terms of the lease and do that consistently.
Correct, but I don't think a condition of the lease is, has anything to do with the EA or the EIS, right? So just, we're looking for it, Randy.
Yeah, these are NIPA, this is a NIPA EA and EIS. It's not something that's going to be coming before the commission for approval.
Okay, well, that's too bad. You know, the federal government can be a helping hand or they can be a heavy hand. And if they're heavy-handed in their dealings, there are long-term consequential impacts to Kualapapa. And while I appreciate them recognizing this as a national treasure, it is first and foremost Hawaii's treasure. So, you know, I, I just, and, and William, I am frustrated because I don't like it when the federal government, government is being dismissive of the, the mana'o that's coming out of our communities regarding Kualapapa. So I'm done.
Thank you, Randy. And I'll just say for the record that in my previous employment with the state, it was DLNR's decision, it was actually my decision that we not transfer the three valleys that are referred to, which created the biggest uproar. I think it was seven or eight years ago. So I, I understand and we'll look at whatever tools we have to bring them back into the fold to make sure that they actually seriously consider from a Hawaiian perspective and from a DHHL perspective, I guess the implications of this action. Okay?
Okay.
Other, other, other comments?
Yeah, this Dennis and Kway, I, I agree with several points that Randy made. Number one, this, this meeting needs to be broken up so we can concentrate a little better on what we're hearing and, and, you know, there's still a lot of things we need to discuss, that we'd like to discuss, but we just don't have the time to do it in one day. So I'd appreciate if we look at, at, at two days, our normal meeting. And, and as well, you know, the, the issue with Kualapapa is, is very disrespectful from the, from the federal side to say that, you know, to dismiss the mana'o from, you know, our, our beneficiaries in respect for our components that are in that site. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you. We have one last agenda item. It's more record keeping unless you have a specific question and that's item D1. And Juan, thank you for sticking it out with us.
No, kudos to the commissioners, man. You guys are hardcore.
How much coffee does that guy have?
You guys have any questions on the HSD reports? We did distribute for you the information with regards to the loan deferral.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
Nope. No question. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Follow on.
Okay, you guys have a good evening. Be safe. Aloha.
You too.
Good night, Juan. The only, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring the J agenda items. Just for reference, the department will be looking at responding to the J agenda items as, as submitted. And then I also had, in a little note to myself, other commissioners, are you folks okay going back to a two-day agenda when we have heavy agenda qua, quantity? I see somebody.
Silence is golden.
Okay, I think.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we'll take a look at the, the agenda and decide whether to go back to two days. Thank you very much. I also want to point out that the next meeting is September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. And one quick update is Commissioner Tauria still on? Okay, I just was gonna report to Commissioner Tauria that one of her concerns that she brought up for a R-SE transfer has been resolved. You'll see it on the September agenda item. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular agenda and then recome back real quickly for contested cases.
Don't move.
Then seconded, hearing no opposition. Meeting is closed.